Welcome and thank you for joining us today for the president's virtual town hall meeting to discuss the reopening of the university. I'm Keith Miles, interim director of the Office of Communications, and I'll serve as your moderator this afternoon. Today, you will hear from President Larry Robinson, Rika Calhoun, who chaired the task force, and several members of the senior leadership team on issues related to the university's reopening and operations going forward that was just approved by the Florida Board of Governors. Additionally, they will respond to many of the questions that have been submitted and respond to as many live questions as time will allow. To submit a question, click on the Q and A icon on your screen. If we don't get to answer your question, please send them to townhall@famu.edu and we will respond. Also, this forum will be recorded and posted for your viewing later at your leisure. As we get started today, let me thank you for your commitment to making sure the university continues to operate during these uncertain times and helping us to disseminate accurate information to all of our key stakeholders. Now, it is my pleasure to introduce to you FAMU president, Dr. Larry Robinson.
Thanks, Keith. I want to welcome everyone to this virtual town hall meeting. We are really happy that so many of you have joined us as we share with you our operational plans for reopening Florida A&amp;M University. As Keith indicated, the approval of our reopening plan was made by the Board of Governors earlier this week. That approval is a testament to the hard work of our team to incorporate comprehensive measures for safe reopening. Florida Secretary of Health was also present at that Board of Governors meeting. And FAMU, along with our fellow S U S institutions, shared reopening plans for the fall semester. Let me say upfront that the health and safety of the FAMU community are our highest considerations. However, if necessary, we are prepared to pivot to a remote or virtual mode of operation based upon the circumstances around the COVID-19 pandemic. With a spike in COVID-19 cases in Florida, we understand the concerns of our stakeholders and will do all we can to continue to provide exceptional experiences for our students and address the well-being of our faculty and staff in light of these developments. We will not take the return to campus lightly as we execute our reopening strategies. We will make all of our full commitment to maintain an environment conducive to the well-being of our stakeholders. We must protect ourselves and others who endeavor to join us at the university, students, faculty, staff, parents, visitors, or members of the community. Let me thank Ms. Rika Calhoun and her task force again for the long hours and hard work that they put into developing our reopening plan. They have done an excellent job of positioning us to reopening. As I desire to provide you in this town hall meeting with accurate information to help you communicate to others what really is going on at the university. We need your continued commitment to help us get the word out. Your input and buy-in is equally important as we follow the guidelines and protocols to ensure the health and safety of our return for the fall semester. We've received many questions for us to consider today, and I want to thank you for that. We look forward to answering them and the live questions that you were sent during this meeting. So, thank you again for joining us and for your continued support of Florida A&amp;M University. I've asked these members of the senior leadership team to join me today and share their thoughts on reopening. Provost and Vice President for Academic Affairs, Dr. Maurice Eddington. Dr. William Hudson, Jr., and Vice President of Student Affairs, Dr. Alan Robinson, Vice President for Finance and Administration, and Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Rika Calhoun, Chief Compliance and Ethics Officer, and Chair of our Task Force on Operations Continuity. Dr. Shante Friday Stroud, Vice President for the FAMU Foundation and Dean of the School of Business and Industry, and Mr. Courtney Gochet, Vice President and Director of Athletics. We begin today with Ms. Rika Calhoun, our Chief Compliance and Ethics Officer and the Chair of the Task Force to present our overview of our approved reopening plans. I want to thank all of you once again for joining us and thank all of the members of the team who worked so hard in the FAMU family to make this possible.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I need to share my screen if I could. As Dr. Robinson mentioned, I will be providing an overview of the university's reopening plan that was approved by the Board of Governors on June 23rd. Like many universities across the country, we've spent the last months responding to the pandemic and planning for the reopening with the well-being of faculty, staff, and students in mind. The university's reopening plan comports with the Board of Governors' expectations, which they approved. The five elements of the plan include a focus on a healthy campus and community environment, COVID-19 testing, contact tracing and surveillance, and academic program delivery. A few highlights follow. The university is employing a phased approach to ensure that we are appropriately managing returning groups leading up to reopening. Social distancing will be observed on our campuses as evidenced by reduced occupancy in facilities, classrooms, and residence halls. Students requesting accommodations may request assistance from the Center for Disability Access and Resources, or CEDAR. Employees requesting accommodations may contact Equal Opportunity Programs or Systems. The university has implemented enhanced cleaning protocols, which you will hear more about tonight. Faculty, staff, and students are required to wear face coverings in buildings, classrooms, and in public spaces in which social distancing cannot be observed, and that is in effect immediately. The university is providing return kits for employees and students, which include one disposable face covering, two reusable face coverings, and two personal containers of hand sanitizer. Each kit will also contain information about university expectations regarding hand and cough hygiene, social distancing, and how to wear a face mask, so face mask instructions. Faculty, staff, and students will receive their kits through distribution points on our campuses. Phase one kits were distributed through the Lawson Center, so we will have a similar process for each phase. Hand sanitizer refill stations will also be placed throughout our campuses. Faculty, staff, and students returning to campus are expected to participate in daily self-screening for COVID-19 symptoms and temperature checks at least once prior to leaving home each day, ideally through the use of the FAMU mobile app. And a temperature and symptom log is also available for those unable to access the app on our COVID-19 website page. Employees are also expected to self-disclose travel to and from geographic areas with identified significant community transmission. Thermometers have been purchased for use throughout the university for employees prior to their entrance into selected high-risk, high-density workplaces. Temperature kiosks are also scheduled for installation in selected high-traffic areas, such as the library. These kiosks will record a person's temperature and produce an alert if their temperature is higher than the set normal. Testing will be offered on the main university campus for Fall 2020 through our Bragg Stadium site. We have identified community testing sites for the College of Law and FAMU sites across the state. In the event that our community testing site closes, the university's Student Health Services will support continued testing for faculty, staff, and students, and we will keep our satellite sites, you know, up to date as to what sites will be available to them as well. The university's COVID-19 testing program establishes a collaborative approach to testing. As we know, testing is just a snapshot in time, so faculty and staff returning to campus to perform their ongoing duties will be strongly encouraged to undergo initial testing to establish a baseline of active infection prior to their phase return to campus. Additional testing schedules are recommended for identified high-risk groups. For example, Student Health Services staff have established a schedule of testing as part of their reopening operations. Residential students are also strongly encouraged to undergo initial testing upon arrival, prior to arrival to campus, to establish a baseline. Student groups living on or off campus, including medically vulnerable students, student athletes, and students returning to campus from areas with significant community transmission, will receive priority for testing or have an established testing schedule as part of their participation in certain student activities. The university will employ Sentinel Monitoring, which is a monthly evaluating of 2% of faculty and staff testing, working on campus, and students who have either voluntarily tested or are selected at random. The Department of Health has a statutorily designated responsibility for contact tracing and reporting. We will continue to supplement their efforts, their contact tracing efforts through information sharing, and the assistance of university faculty. Any university community members assisting with contact tracing will be trained by the Department of Health. Quarantine has also been considered in the university's reopening plan. Individuals who have been diagnosed with COVID-19 will be subject to isolation in their current residence, either on campus or off, following the care of their healthcare providers. Individuals who have been exposed to COVID-19 are requested to quarantine and monitor their symptoms. Currently, 48 two-bedroom, one-bath apartments are available in Palmetto North Complex to support these students, our residential students. Appropriate offices will assist impacted students as much as possible using virtual healthcare options, food service, technology, and academic support. Quarantined or isolated members of the university community must be cleared to return, and the university has developed return-to-work guidelines for clearance for our employees, and Student Health Services will review all clearances for students. Local health authorities have been notified that we intend to welcome our students back in the fall, and we anticipate that our healthcare system can support the needs of our faculty, staff, and students. However, as Dr. Robinson mentioned, given recent events, we continue to closely monitor the evolving situation and follow guidance from our local and state health officials. Student Health Services is responsible for coordinating surveillance to assess the campus and regional environment related to the pandemic, and so we have considered that in our plan as well to continually monitor the environment and inform our decision-making or leadership decision-making. We are continuing. We are continuing preparation for our constituencies and spaces for the fall following recommended social distancing guidelines. Some key points in the timeline that you'll notice here, focus on training and enhanced cleaning protocols, as well as the return to campus for faculty, staff, and students. As you'll know, we are in phase one, and we're quickly approaching phase two, our phase two return on July 1st, in which approved researchers will return. So, this gives you certain key points in our timeline leading up to reopening, which is scheduled for August 24th. Faculty, staff, and students will receive COVID-19 education and resources before returning to campus, and essential employees who have continued working throughout this period will also receive training. So, those were some of our highlights. We know that the COVID-19 pandemic is an unprecedented event that is quickly changing all the time. Flexibility is not only needed in planning but through implementation, and our reopening plan is designed to allow us to adapt and respond to the evolving environment. Members of our implementation team are in regular communication with the local and state departments of health to inform leadership's decision-making. You will hear great information tonight about the things that the university is doing to prepare for your return and a successful fall reopening, but we cannot do it without you. We, as members of the university community, must commit to the shared responsibility of keeping ourselves and each other as safe as possible. You will be provided with resources and information to help you prepare and to mitigate the risk of COVID-19 transmission as much as possible. However, the university can only do so much. It is incumbent on faculty, staff, and students, visitors, and vendors, and parents, and our community to adhere to policies and protocols enforcing the university's response to COVID-19, including our social distancing guidelines, facial covering requirements, and hygiene and cleaning practices. We look forward to welcoming you back. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Calhoun. Provost, Dr. Maurice Eddington, CFO, Dr. Alan Robertson, Vice President for Student Affairs, Dr. William Hudson, Jr., and Vice President and Director of Athletics, Courtney Gochet, and Vice President and Dean of the School of Business and Industry, Dr. Shante Friday Stroud are all here, and they will share their thoughts about reopening plans and answer some questions you submitted as well. We will begin with Provost Eddington.
Thank you, Keith, and good afternoon to everyone. Again, it's a pleasure to have an opportunity to speak to you and to address your questions. Most of the questions that I address obviously will be focused on academics and instructional modes, and I want to read a brief summary first, and then I'll take some specific questions. And the summary is related to the updating of the fall schedule. Instruction for Fall 2020 will be offered via a combination of remote slash online and face-to-face delivery modes. As a result, a large number of courses that were originally scheduled for face-to-face instruction will be transitioned to the remote format. This is requiring that we go into the iRattler system and make updates so that the course designations reflect the appropriate mode of instructional delivery. That updating process is underway as we speak, and we expect that it will be completed by July 6th. And so, many students are noticing that designations for classes are changing, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that, but I want to just explain what the process is, and we're going to send out a communication with some additional insight into that to complement what you hear here today. So, to talk about that topic in a little more detail, as well as to specifically address some of the questions that were sent in, I'll go ahead and get started. With the change in the schedule for fall, what are the definitions behind the online location, remote location, or hybrid? What does that mean? So, I want to explain that. Online, that means the traditional online courses that FAMU has offered for many years, where the course is delivered primarily via an asynchronous mode. So, there's no face-to-face instruction there. The materials are online and available to the students, and in most cases, it's a self-paced kind of study. That type of course has been offered at FAMU for many years, so if students see an online designation, that's what that means. Most of the courses will have what's called a remote designation. So, when we use the general term "remote instruction," that means that the course is taught synchronously via Zoom lectures or some other approach in real time, but there's no face-to-face instruction either, right? So, online and remote both specifically mean no face-to-face instruction. The term "hybrid" is where you have a combination of some form of in-person interaction, whether it's to come to class for lectures or exams, as well as some type of remote instruction. So, some classes will have the hybrid, which does mean that students will be required to attend a face-to-face setting at some level of frequency. Next question, if I live off-campus and my classes are remote, will I be able to go see my professor in their office for assistance, and will tutors be available on campus? So, we are going to have tutorial services available on campus adhering to social distancing guidelines, as well as having tutorial services available remotely for students. With respect to faculty, most faculty will hold virtual hours via Zoom, meaning it's remote. There will be some select faculty who make themselves available in person, but most students can expect to have the office hours delivered in a virtual setting, and your instructors in your courses will inform you of how office hour will be conducted. Next question, will there be more classes available online or hybrid this fall? And I'll paraphrase, the student basically is saying that they would like to take classes online. Once we complete the updates in the system that I mentioned previously, students will find that the majority of the course offerings are remote or online. So, most students will be able to select courses and take them remotely. But there will be a subsection of those that are offered face-to-face, and those are more laboratory-type courses, music courses, et cetera. And then, at the upper level, there's a select number across the academic colleges and schools, and so students will have to wait until the update is done, go in and take a look at their schedule, look at the specific courses that you have, and that's how you'll know what that combination looks like. And then, next question is, you know, my classes are all showing remote. Will they be hybrid or 100% online? So, after the update is complete, that's how you'll know whether all of your courses are remote, whether they're all face-to-face, or if there's a combination. We are going to work with every student to accommodate those, particularly students that they have a preference for online instruction. Instead of face-to-face, we're certainly going to accommodate you and try to work to make sure you have available courses. For students who prefer to have all face-to-face, we can't guarantee that you'll have all face-to-face courses, right? The majority of courses will be offered remotely, but certainly you'll be able to see what the selection is once that schedule is updated after or on July 7th. Next question has to do with tuition. We've gotten this question a lot, and basically, the interest is, is there going to be a reduction in the rates for out-of-state tuition? And the answer is no, because the tuition rates for in-state and out-of-state students, the reason that they're different is because out-of-state students are not subsidizing education by being members of the state and contributing to the state's tax base. So, most states charge an out-of-state tax for students who don't live in the state because they don't contribute to the tax base. So, our tuition rates are set whether the student is in Tallahassee or taking the class outside of the state. Next question is around, for faculty teaching face-to-face, who's going to police the students to ensure that they wear their PPE? If I tell a student to leave and he or she does not want to go, what should be done? Well, as Ms. Calhoun stressed, first and foremost, we are going to stress and hold students and all stakeholders accountable for personal responsibility, right? But in terms of enforcement, and particularly in this case, what I don't want is to have faculty having confrontations with students in these situations, and so we're going to work with our campus safety office to have a mechanism available for faculty to either call for assistance or remove themselves from that situation immediately, if that's the best scenario. So, we're going to stress to all stakeholders, we do not want to have confrontations in any settings on our campus moving forward. Next question, some classes are designated as independent study. Is this considered remote learning in person or a combination? And most likely, it's going to be remote. The independent study is a very specific type of course, and that course is mapped out where as the student and the faculty member, they agree on what's going to happen in terms of the delivery, but most likely, the course will be remote. But the student, any student in that class should consult with the program and the faculty member specifically. Next question, do students have the option to select another class that will be in-person learning if assigned a virtual class? So, my interpretation is, if a student sees that their course is scheduled to be offered remotely, will they have the option of taking that same course as a face-to-face? In some cases, the answer is yes, right? It's going to depend on which courses are not converted to remote learning, but the students will be able to see very specifically what that situation is when we update the system. But I'll stress, the majority of courses will be remote, right? I want to make sure everyone understands that. Will students be allowed to enroll in classes but continue to reside at home? If all of your courses are offered remotely, then certainly that option will be available. Another question had to do with teaching laboratory courses. How will we teach those effectively? And a lot of the labs are going to be taught remotely. The technology available for laboratory instruction has advanced tremendously in the past several years, and so what many institutions, including FAMU, are doing is taking advantage of simulation software and technology that really does a good job of providing learning experiences remotely using the technology to enforce the concepts that students would get in face-to-face experiences. Now, however, there are some labs that will be taught face-to-face, and those are going to be done adhering to social distancing guidelines, okay? Meaning spacing out the students, and even if we have to create additional sections to accommodate the numbers, we will do that. Another question had to do with the transition to Canvas and whether we're going to use Blackboard Connect to communicate with students. We still are going to use Blackboard Connect for communication in terms of sending students' messages as needed, but the classroom instruction, the learning management system, will be Canvas moving forward this fall. Another question had to do with how will classroom capacity be determined for students who are already signed up for fall classes? Will a student be cut from a class to adhere to room capacities? We will be adjusting the capacities in the face-to-face courses to remain in alignment with social distancing guidelines. As we do that, certainly we will work to accommodate the students by using strategies such as offering additional sections and basically doing our best to accommodate students. But any student who finds that they have been adversely impacted should contact that program directly so that we can work with you if we don't address your issue on the front end. And another, and one of my last questions is, in terms of the law school, whether 100% online instruction will be available for students at the law school? And yes, the law school, they're offering a very high number of courses remotely, and they've indicated that they will work with students who want to take all of their courses online to try to accommodate them. And my last question is, I'll make it a little more general, so around students who have medical issues, but they want to attend school, will they have the option to attend school online? And again, answer is yes, it's going to be based on the course offerings, but because a lot of the courses will be offered remotely, certainly students in that situation will have a lot of options with respect to the courses that are available to them. And as I close out, I will just stress that although we're offering a lot of courses remotely, we still want our students to return because there are a number of rich educational experiences that they can participate in by being in the campus environment, adhering to safety guidelines, and our learning and academic support services will be available to students on our campus as well as remotely. So, there's a lot to offer to students who choose to come back. And with that, Keith, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay. Thank you, Provost Eddington. I'm sure we'll hear from you again as we get to the live questions. We received some questions also regarding funding during this coronavirus pandemic and how those dollars will be used going forward. Our Chief Financial Officer, Dr. Alan Robertson, is here, and he will give us an update on those plans.
Thank you, Keith. We are using the CARES Act monies very strategically to enhance student financial support as well as to enhance our academic programs taught online, as well as to make the campus safe. And so, those monies are being used to purchase personal protective equipment. They're being used to clean the campus, as well as to enhance our air dissipation systems or air handling systems. And we're also bringing in external firms to do a deep cleaning of all of our facilities before the beginning of campus. And so, I'm going to cover a couple of questions that have come in related to facilities and also meal plans, both which are in my area, and I will take one question that were related to HR. And so, one question was, what is the university doing to increase the internet bandwidth while classes are being streamed from their dorm rooms without service interruption? Our ITS, or Information Technology Systems, is doubling the bandwidth across campus to include not only the dorms but all academic facilities. So, we're currently about three gigs in transmission rates, and we're going to increase that to six gigs. And so, this will allow better throughput for remote and distance learning. Another question came in regarding our food service. How are we going to serve food? Will the cafeteria be closed? What will the dining options be? And will there be boxed lunches? In accordance with the university opening plan that Rika Calhoun outlined, we are going to follow CDC guidelines in terms of access to the dining halls, and it will be restricted through a combination of social distancing and lines and seating. Each facility will be set up with a directional flow, and this will allow for the reduction of interaction and crossover spaces during visits. All food concepts All food concepts will have staff serving the food directly to the customers. We will combine new takeout options in the dining hall with pre-ordering at many retail venues. Meal exchange options at several campus locations will allow more choices and reduce the demand on any single location. And then finally, Mets will also offer online ordering at each location for pickup, including at the residence, at the residence dining hall. Will commuter plans be available for students living off-campus? Yes. Both commuter meal plans and mandatory meal plans are options for students residing off-campus or in non-traditional residence halls. And then finally, what is our policy on dorm cleaning? Our plant operations and maintenance crew will increase our routine cleaning effort, sanitizing and wipe downs of all surfaces. And we are using chemical fogging, automatic spraying, electrostatic spraying and manual disinfection. And we're enhancing our air filtration systems. But most important, we're going to increase the the sweeping, mopping, vacuuming, dusting of hallways, offices, washrooms and labs. In addition to our routine cleaning of classrooms and more frequent trash collection in common areas and spaces that are high-traffic areas, and we're using CDC chemicals. So Keith, back to you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Robertson. As Dr. Robins said in his opening remarks, the spike or uptick in COVID positive cases in Florida is a cause for concern as we address our reopening plans. The director of our Student Health Services, Ms. Tanya Tatum, is here to shed some light on that and other health-related concerns as we move forward. Ms. Tatum?
Thank you, Keith. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for joining us this afternoon. We are really glad to have the opportunity to speak with you about our reopening plans. We've worked very hard. A good number of people have worked very hard to pull this together. I do want to assure everyone that we are monitoring the status of the infections in community, in all of our communities and across the state on a daily basis. I'm very fortunate to work with members of the Florida Department of Health every day. And I'm on a number of conference calls with them. And so we are monitoring everything so that we can make adjustments to our plan as we need to. So that is something that we will be working on and continuing to update as we move forward. It's not possible for us to give definite answers right now as to what our plan will actually be once August arrives. But please understand that we are monitoring the situation and that we will make adjustments as needed. One of the key things that, one of the key things that we will be doing is really requesting everyone to participate in testing so that I think that's one of the key points in our plan. And this is the shared responsibility. Everybody needs to kind of do their part, finding out your own status and then taking precautions in doing behavior changes to help maintain that status of trying not to becoming infected. Wearing your face mask, avoiding large gatherings, constantly washing your hands and using hand sanitizer, all of those things will be absolutely critical in helping to maintain and lower the risk of individuals becoming infected on our campus. So there've been lots of questions about testing. We've been very fortunate to have the older host, the community testing site here in Leon County. We have been authorized to test up to 400 individuals a day. One day, we actually exceeded 500. The testing site is extremely busy, which is a good thing in that I'm glad that individuals are coming to get tested. But it also is a reflection of what we're seeing in our communities. I encourage everyone to find out the locations where they can be tested. The state has community testing sites all across the region. South Florida, Central Florida, and in the Panhandle area. You can look on the website for the Division of Emergency Management. It's florida-disaster.org. And that lists all of the testing sites, the community testing sites that are available in every community that the state operates. Take advantage of those if they're close to where you live. If not, I suggest that you contact your local healthcare provider or there may be a pharmacy somewhere in your location that is offering COVID-19 tests. But it's important to go ahead and get tested to check your status so that you can make sure that you're taking care of yourself and your family and the individuals around you. Once we've done the testing, the other part that comes into play are contact tracing. Individuals that find that they are positive for COVID-19, the state actually gets the lab test results from whichever lab conducts the test. So they're the ones that are actually notified of positive test results. They have the legal authority to do contact tracing. However, because we have a number of institutions of higher learning which have very large populations across the state, all of the schools are working with the with the State Department of Health to work out other arrangements or particular arrangements for managing contact tracing of our populations. So the state is actually hiring additional contact tracers. That can be some of our faculty or some of our graduate students or other individuals and they'll be assigned to our institutions to help us manage that contact tracing. We will also have some responsibility and we'll be assisting them with that process. So it is utmost importance that we manage that contact tracing in a very efficient manner. And we're working towards making sure we have all those agreements in place to do that. I think, let's see, other questions that we received. A lot of people have asked about, are we going to mandate tests? At this time, we're not mandating testing. We are strongly encouraging it for everyone, faculty, staff and students. Like I said earlier, I think it's very important just for your own personal knowledge and for you to be able to be safe as well as the people around you. Mandating testing, I don't know that is accomplished what we would like it to do because that test gives you that result for that point in time. If you get tested and then you go out and celebrate, once you get your result, you may ruin that test result. So we're just going to encourage everybody to get tested, certainly anyone who shows any symptoms, make sure you go get tested. And I think that is all the questions that I have responses for at this point in time.
Ms. Tatum, before you leave, I just want to emphasize to everyone that the FAMU Bond Health Clinic testing site at Bragg Stadium is free. It's available to any student and a faculty or any community member. Or at this point, you don't have to be a resident of Tallahassee or Leon County to take advantage of it. You do not need a doctor's referral. You know, as as Tatum indicated, the number of people coming to the site has increased and that is a good thing. However, we have the capacity to handle that and we strongly encourage each and every one of you to go ahead and get tested now.
Thank you. Yes, and all the locations that are listed through the Division of Emergency Management are community testing sites operated by the state. It is all free and that's why we're recommending that individuals check those locations first. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Tatum and Dr. Robinson. We received many questions on housing, students returning to campus, access to campus, recruitment, dining services and other student-related issues. Dr. William Hudson, Jr., Vice President for Student of Affairs is here and will address many of those concerns.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you, Keith. I echo the comments by Dr. Robinson, Provost Eddington, Tanya Tatum, Rika Calhoun and also Vice President Robinson. We really want to stress that you abide by the CDC guidelines and remain safe. And as you transition back to campus, make sure that you are doing those similar things as well. I'll go over the questions that were presented to us earlier today. The first, what factors are considered in the selection process for housing? Housing assignments are based on the date of the application. The application is received and space availability. It is on a first-come, first-served basis. How will students be notified if they have a housing assignment? Students who signed up through the housing portal know their room assignments as they selected their room. Students who applied after May 29, 2020 are on the waiting list and will be notified by the July 24, 2020. This is in response to students asking for additional time to make a decision about housing after class schedules are released the first of July, during the first week of July. Students with housing assignments who have online classes will be allowed to cancel without penalty by a specified date to be announced after the class schedule is released. As cancellations are received, students on the waitlist will be assigned rooms based on application date. If they have not been assigned housing, what are our options or alternatives? Students who do not receive housing assignments have the option to secure off-campus housing or remain at home and take classes remotely. The Office of Student Activities will be offering virtual off-campus fairs that will be available to students in July. What is the policy on dorm cleanings? Vice President Robinson has covered that, but the residence hall cleaning protocols are following CDC guidelines for high-touch in common area spaces and bathrooms. Students are responsible for cleaning their own rooms and suites and apartment bathrooms. When will students find out if they have been chosen for the towers? Students waiting on housing assignments will be notified by July 24, 2020. Students may check their assignment status by going to university housing website, click on application and assignments, then click on book, view room assignment and that information will be available. If each dorm will become a single, how will that work for students who have doubles? Will we have to reapply for housing? Students assigned to a double room would not have to reapply for housing. Housing staff will realign one of the two people assigned to the double rooms to a new space. Are there any conditions with respect to transmission of the virus that will warrant preventing a return to campus for students? The course of this pandemic and the impact on our communities continue to change and we hope that the situation does not worsen to the point that it jeopardizes our reopening. We will continue to communicate with our local and state agencies daily regarding the pandemic status in our communities and will follow their advice and guidance as we make decisions in the future. For the upcoming 2020 fall semester, how will the career expo be organized and executed? The Fall Career and Internship Expo will be held virtually through our Hire a Rattler powered by handshake platform. Employers will be allowed to create schedules to meet with students in groups and one-on-one sessions during the event and later on. Students can sign up for those sessions before the event or during the event. Employers will have access to our platform's video chat feature and share their session, their screens with students during their sessions. This year, to provide flexibility for our employer partners and our students, the event will take place over two days. Wednesday, September 23, 2020, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. and Thursday, September 24, 2020, between 4:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. Will federal work-study be available? Students have been awarded federal work-study for the fall semester. At this time, the Office of Financial Aid are reviewing all options and awaiting on guidance from the Department of Education for the federal work-study program. We envision the federal work-study program operating the same as last year, whether in person or remotely. Students have been awarded, students that have been awarded federal work-study will be notified via email of the work-study job selection process once additional guidance is received. What also happens is if students decline work-study, we will look at other students to apply work-study to them. According to scholarship, according to FAMU scholarship rules, students are required to stay on campus for their freshman and sophomore years in order to receive scholarship funds. If a freshman or sophomore scholar has all remote learning classes on their schedule this fall, will they still be required to stay on campus in order to receive their scholarship money? Scholarship month, scholarship students are required to reside on campus for two years. If students are residing at home and taking remote courses, they will continue to have their tuition and fees paid by the scholarship. The housing and meal plan will be deferred until they return to campus. This means no refund of housing and meal plan for those students residing at home as opposed to residing on campus. We will send a survey to student scholars to indicate their mode and location of taking courses this fall. Junior and senior scholarship students residing in Tallahassee will continue to receive the scholarship and commuter meal plan as a credit, not as a refund, as well as the housing stipend for juniors and seniors. The Office of Financial Aid and the Office of Student Activities will have a town hall for parents and students on July 16 and on August 6 to answer further questions that you may have concerning financial aid and student accounts. Back to you, Keith. You're on mute, Keith.
And that's why you should never mute. All right, here we go. Thank you, Dr. Hudson. Many of you have been supportive of our fundraising efforts during this pandemic period and to help our students as they struggle through this time. Our Vice President for the FAMU Foundation and the Dean of the School of Business and Industry, Dr. Shante Friday-Straub, is here to provide an update. Dr. Friday-Straub?
Hello, all, and thank you all for joining us today. I want to again say thank you to everyone who has donated to FAMU Cares and actually any account with the FAMU Foundation. We truly, truly thank you for your support. It is because of your support that we are able to provide financial support for our students as well as provide laptops for our students as we have transitioned to this remote learning environment that we are in now. And believe it or not, we're still having students in need of computers. And so we would ask that you continue to make donations to FAMU Cares and FAMU Rising. I have also received a few questions from students from SBI. So I will answer those specific questions. So the the first question is for SBI specifically. What will be required for students in terms of attendance slash participation in close-up designated as independent? So for SBI students, all professional leadership development courses and components that students are required to take will be managed through Zoom. And so you will be provided with those Zoom links to attend and you will be provided with the dress code for each particular professional leadership development component. Also, we will have SBI walkthroughs every other Friday where we will be able to have faculty and staff meet with students in our courtyard similar to how we have our kind of P O D extravaganzas and companies and meetings in the courtyard. The second question has to do with how will the internship process be impacted for students planning for spring and summer 2020 internships? So during the fall 2020 semester, SBI, the University Career Center and University Career and Professional Development Center, as well as our career partners, will offer virtual interviewing processes for internships and full-time positions for spring '21 and summer '21. At this time, we are projecting that there will likely be some physical internship capacity during the spring of 2021 and summer of '21. However, should there be some additional unforeseen circumstances, we will make modifications as necessary. But know that we are working with our career partners as well as with our students to ensure that students are able to get internships to meet their graduation requirements. Back to you, Keith.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Friday-Straub. And as we move forward, a lot of questions coming in around athletics. And Athletic Director and Vice President for Athletics, Dr. Courtney Gochet is here to answer some of those questions. Courtney?
Thanks, Keith.
Thanks, Keith. Appreciate it and uh don't give me any more titles. I don't need anymore. But uh good afternoon, Rattlers. Um, it is an exciting time uh for us, but it's also a challenging time uh as we work through some of uh the challenges that COVID nineteen has presented us. Uh, we are getting a lot of questions. Um, I'll start with uh first our student athletes. Um, we have administered uh twenty uh tests to our first tranche of uh football student athletes uh with no positive cases. Uh, and so we are working to phase uh additional student athletes in um by our July one date. Uh, in addition to that, we do have a comprehensive reopening plan uh that is guided by CDC guidelines, uh our conference office and the NCAA. Uh, there will be guidelines forthcoming. We will operate within those guidelines. We will practice uh social distancing and all indications look like we will be playing fall sports. Okay, uh now what will that look like? Uh, it will be a little different than we know it um from normal circumstances. Um, we are going to limit uh capacity to our athletic events. Uh, the priority for access to those events will start with uh our donors in the Rattler Athletic Fund investing in champions and season ticket holders. Uh, and that will be the priority uh for access along with our student population. Um, right now, we are still working through some of the logistics um behind that and how we will administer those uh guidelines. Uh, but we are excited that all indications look like we will be hosting events. A couple of other things that we're working through right now, uh we're getting a lot of questions about um if the season doesn't happen, uh you know, will I get a refund? Uh, we are working with all of our season ticket holders and those who have paid their accounts in advance uh as we would like to credit those, um you know, credit those monies forward uh to the twenty twenty one uh season. And so we are working through that. If you have questions, please contact our ticket office or the athletic department. Uh, and our team will gladly answer those questions. Uh, as many of you may know, um Southern University canceled our week two game in Baton Rouge. And uh just a little while ago, uh we announced that we have replaced that game with Jackson State. And so the Rattlers will be traveling to Jackson, Mississippi week two um as a replacement in that game. And so a lot of good things are happening. Uh, we're excited about uh the fall and what it will look like and an opportunity to get our student athletes back to campus. Uh, but there are a little, there are several moving parts during this time and we're asking people to work with us. Uh, and quite frankly, through some of the challenges, uh this is when we need your support the most. Um, if you're interested in supporting our program and helping us uh close the gap, uh then please do so by giving to the Rattler Athletic Fund. Uh, this can happen at famuathletics.com or or call the athletic department for additional uh instructions. And so uh again, we are very excited uh about what the fall will look like, even though it will be different. Uh, including homecoming, uh we are planning to have the homecoming game and working with a lot of uh at the university level to determine what uh that will look like and the mechanisms uh that some of these events will be delivered. Uh, so stay tuned. Uh, a lot of people are are working very hard behind the scenes. Uh, the president, Dr. Larry Robinson and his leadership team. Um, and so we're again working very diligently to have a safe and healthy fall uh as that is our number one priority for our student athletes. And so thanks, Keith. I will turn it back over to you.
All right, thank you, Vice President and Athletic Director Courtney Gochay. Now we will answer some of the questions that you've sent during this town hall meeting. There are a ton of them. But if we don't get to answer your question, please send them to townhall@famu.edu and we will respond. Also remember, the recording of this event will be posted to famu.edu forward slash virtual town hall for you to review at your leisure. And here's some of the remarks that you may, that may have been covered, that you may have missed during the broadcast of this town hall meeting. Uh, one of the first questions uh I think would probably be best answered by uh Ms. Calhoun and also uh Tanya Tatum, we we refers to our remote campuses in areas where there is a rise in um viral cases. What are considerations being given to our off-campus sites, especially those where the pandemic numbers are rising?
So this is Rika. They are considered in um our larger planning. Um, you know, we have in the plan itself, we have considered not only the school of law um or the College of Law, but also um our sites in Brooksville, Crestview and the like. So they are as part of our overall planning considerations. And I know that Student Health Services and Ms. Tatum take them into account during their surveillance activities. So when we're looking at rates of infection um and you know pulling in that data, um we are considering all of our campuses and all of our faculty, staff and students. Um, did you have something to add, Ms. Tatum?
Um, yes, the only thing I would add to that is that um all of the areas, all of the departments um have a role to help us um with that. When we, you know, everyone's been asked to help complete risk assessments for the individual work sites. And so they are in a position to enable us to assist them in preparing that site in that location for return to work. So we're taking that information that they give us in addition to the additional planning and the resources that we have. We're trying to make sure that each site is lo, is supplied and prepared um to their individual needs.
If I could add uh Keith to this, you know, the way we operate, um in fact, you know, FAMU has a footprint in every region of this state, right? And the normal way that we operate in an emergency and typically a hurricane, we haven't experienced this before. There there's a lot of uh autonomy given to those local sites as to how they respond. However, they have to respond within this overall framework that we have for a reopening plan. Uh, but we recognize that circumstances are different, you know, everywhere. But one of the things we have to really be mindful of is that um, you know, we we cannot uh assume that anyone coming to campus is immune to this virus, whether they're in a low area of impact or higher of impact. The same protocols are going to apply, you know, no matter where they are. But it could be that some situations require more uh tougher measures in terms of opening and operating than in other parts of the state. But this plan is designed to impact the entire FAMU uh community throughout all of those operations in the state of Florida.
Thank you, Ms. Calhoun, Ms. Tatum and Dr. Robinson. Uh, another question, uh this one I think is for uh Dr. Eddington. Are there changes to contractual responsibilities and assignment distributions expected to be in effect for faculty? If so, when can faculty be expected to review those?
Yeah, well, in terms of the the contracts and the assignment of responsibilities for faculty, um there 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 shouldn't be any significant changes to to the process, uh to the assignments, right? The faculty members should be in contact with their department chairs and division directors uh as they normally are around their assignments and and annual contracts. But there shouldn't be significant changes um because the the mode of instruction uh it it shouldn't dictate significant changes to that. So but what I would do is encourage each faculty member to uh contact directly their program as they normally do at this time as they make plans for the upcoming academic year.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Eddington. Uh, this one for uh uh Dr. Hudson. Uh, will you uh provide more detail regarding the ten-day move-in? Will all freshmen move in on the same day as indicated on the orientation registration according to their major?
Well, the move-in dates are actually August fifteenth and August eighteenth. We are going to stagger it at the different buildings. And so people will be able to move in uh and abide by the CDC guidelines for social and physical distancing. So we have a strategy that we have where everyone's moving in at different times and allowing for um appropriate amount of time between move-in for individuals on different floors and in different building. So we have those safety measures in place.
Okay, this is maybe a follow-up for you, Dr. Hudson, or maybe Dr. Wilder and Tanya Tatum. Will students receive guidance on proper cleaning of dorm dorm rooms or residence halls and apartments given the COVID nineteen?
Absolutely. They will receive the proper guidance on cleaning uh of their internal spaces. As stated before, uh we will uh along with uh Dr. Robinson and his team, Dr. Robertson and his team uh for the common spaces and hallways.
Okay, thank you. Uh, one for Tanya Tatum. Can the COVID site, FAMU COVID site administer testing uh within a forty-eight hour turnaround like the the CBS or the Patients First site, which is a rapid response site here in Tallahassee? Uh, and um uh to have a student get a test two weeks before school uh doesn't seem like it's gonna help minimizing the spread. And so the, I guess the question here is about the turnaround of from being tested.
Okay, thank you, Keith. Um, right now, we're looking at about a five-day, three to five-day period of time in order to get test results back from our testing site here. Um, and that's up pretty much about the timeframe for most of the testing, the community testing sites across the state. Um, there are rapid tests that are available. Um, we don't have the capacity to offer those at this time. Um, however, if individuals would like to get them there, they can um understand that there's a cost or a charge that goes that's associated with that. Um, but right now, we're looking at about a five, three to five-day turnaround time for receiving test results. One of the things that I want to emphasize about the testing is that, as we said earlier, a test for you at that point in time. Um, so it's important that we look at behaviors and what we're doing more so than actual testing. Um, if you test and you then go out and do something that might negate the results of that test, you may need to get tested again. So it's really taking a look at um one, getting that baseline test, finding out if you're positive or negative. And then after that, making sure you're following the CDC guidelines with the social distancing and wearing your mask and avoiding large gatherings and frequent hand washing. It's gonna be really important.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Tatum. Um, Dr. Eddington, how will the pharmacy program handle classes that are labs? And uh and also ensure class sizes and adequate spacing?
Yeah, so the the Kaiser Pharmacy are gonna offer uh in in general courses, I think for P ones and P twos remotely and P threes um in person. Um, all the courses that are offered face-to-face are gonna be offered um in accordance with social distancing guidelines. So for example, that includes making sure we have adequate spacing. And then if that uh dictates that the um classes need to be split up to accommodate the enrollments or or other strategies, that they they will pursue those um channels as needed. Uh, but students should contact the program directly um once the schedules are uh updated on July seventh uh for specific responses to to those types of situations. But a lot of that information will be made available in the system on July seventh.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Eddington. Uh, this is a uh probably, uh Dr. Hudson, it's probably an HR question uh for faculty and staff. Are we still required to self-quarantine for fourteen days if we travel outside of the Panhandle? And also, should an employee contract COVID nineteen and they must self-quarantine for fourteen days, do they use sick leave?
Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. Um, as it relates to the uh first question, in terms of traveling um outside of the Big Ben area or traveling to um other locations and returning um to campus, you are expected to self-quarantine um for those fourteen days. Um, you will not have to use your sick leave if the university asks you to self-quarantine as a result of any testing that may have been completed. So in that instance, you will have the opportunity to use administrative leave.
Thank you, and that's Joyce Ingram, who is over human resources at Florida A and M University. Thank you, Joyce, very much. Uh, follow-up question here, this was probably for um Tanya Tatum and uh Dr. Wilder and over housing. How will FAMU approach supporting students who might get ill as a result of COVID nineteen?
Um, this is Tanya. One of the things that we've done for students that may test positive for COVID is we have established uh set aside a location where we can um have separate spaces for students that need to either be in quarantine or isolation. Um, we have about forty-eight apartments, so we'll be able to support students there where they can can be. Um, students will will may have meals delivered, um they'll be checked in by um medical professionals each day and um we will also provide that academic support. So if they're still feeling good, then they can go ahead and continue their classes. Um, and we'll make sure that academic support is there as well as any kind of mental health or case management services that they may need to make sure that they stay on track. Um, so we really intend to make sure that we support those students as much as possible. Anyone in need of additional medical care, we'll make sure that they're able to access access that also.
Thank you, Ms. Tatum. What is the policy respect to managing international students at FAMU? They're coming from abroad. What arrangements are being made for them?
Okay, uh. You go ahead.
Yeah, no, I was just gonna say from an instructional perspective, uh the the normal uh limitations uh in terms of uh international students um being able or being limited to take online courses. Many of those um restrictions are being relaxed um as we work through the pandemic. So international students who need specific guidance and information around the the educational instructional requirements can contact our Office of International Studies and Education uh under the direction of Dr. William Heineman. But to reiterate, a lot of those guidelines or restrictions are being relaxed.
Okay, thank you. Thanks very much. Um, when will, this is Dr. Hudson. When will freshmen who are on the housing waiting list be informed of whether or not they will be assigned to on-campus housing?
July twenty-fourth.
Great, thank you. Um, got something here for uh Athletic Director and Vice President. Uh, will we be able to keep our current seats for investing in champion season ticket holders? If so, how will we social distance when these ticket holders are seated next to each other?
Very, very good question. Vi- very good question. Um, the reality is that there will be some modifications. Um, you know, we are assessing that and developing a plan right now. Our goal is to try to uh provide as much normalcy uh for those season ticket holders and investing in champ. As members as possible. Um, and to make sure that we are implementing, um one of those guidelines will be uh that there's gonna be an expectation to wear masks uh when attending the games. Uh, but then also some of the seating arrangements uh will be uh will be essentially roped off uh and monitored to keep social distancing. So um we're we're hopeful to publicly get some plans out there uh within the next month uh so that everyone can kind of see that and kind of prep themselves for the visual of what that will look like. Uh, but there will be um some adjustments. Uh, our North End Zone Club uh that's associated with the Investing in Champions uh will not really be a congregational area uh anymore. It's gonna be more of a pass-through. And so uh there will be some adjustments, uh but hopefully, we're hopeful to get uh some visuals out on that by the end of the month.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm gonna bring back Joyce Ingram for this one. It's a HR question. If I am an OPS employee, will I be paid for my days if I have to self-quarantine?
OPS employees are only paid for hours worked. Um, so if there is a need to self-quarantine, we would need to assess that on an individual-by-individual basis. Uh, but at this time, the answer is will be evaluated on a case-by-case basis because they're not entitled to the time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ingram.
You're welcome.
Okay, um. Okay, Courtney, don't go far. This was for you. I'm curious as to what is or isn't going to happen with homecoming this year. Several other HBCUs have canceled everything but the football game due to COVID-19. Is that going to be the same for FAMU?
So that's a very good question. And I would say it's one that we can't fully answer today. You know, what we are going to do and then what we've indicated is we do know that we're going to try to play the game. There are some events around homecoming that really make our homecoming experience what it is. And our team back on the hill is working through that. We're going to do everything that provides a safe and healthy environment for not only our student athletes, but the people that come to our campus and our campus community. And so the details will be forthcoming about what that will look like. Today, we don't have a firm answer. But I will say, I've had some several conversations with several other athletic directors around the country and HBCUs in particular. And I do know, you know, that they're working through some of the challenges in their communities. And again, every institution's got to make a decision to their best interest. And so right now, homecoming is a go. Homecoming will be different. And, you know, what exactly will be different is to be determined. And so we're working through those details and we'll continue to disseminate information once those decisions have been finalized.
Don't go far, Courtney. This one's for you. Will there be tickets available to FAMU fans for away games?
Yes, and it will be on a very, very limited basis. There's a lot of conversation around that right now because stadiums will be limiting their capacities, including us. And so, you know, what are the number of tickets that we're going to provide visiting institutions? And how many are we going to receive? So it's an ebb and flow. We plan to use our website and our social medias to communicate that out to our fan base in advance. For us, we would probably give priority similar to admission to our stadium, to donor season ticket holders and those individuals first. So if you have not gotten your tickets, do so as soon as possible. Again, we still need your support. And again, those individuals will get the first priority to access to away game tickets if they are available. And so don't have a great answer today, but again, we will make sure that we communicate fully to our fan base and our donors at the appropriate time.
Thank you so much. Dr. Eddington, the FAMU College of Engineering is a joint school with Florida State. And I'm sure that they're working together on the reopening plans. The question was, where would the rules, whose rules will be followed? Or are those rules being coordinated?
Yeah, well, both institutions are working closely together to ensure that the procedures in place at the Joint College are transparent and communicated clearly. In many cases, we are deferring to the FSU versions of some of these guidelines. You know, but we made a decision that we will look at each particular type of issue, right? I mean, in general, we're talking about safety protocols. We're talking about returning to work schedules and timelines. And so we look at each of those situations and make decisions about how to implement the policies and procedures and guidelines. But we have worked and committed to having one type of approach. And so many cases, we have deferred to the FSU version of those policies.
Okay, thank you, sir. Don't go away, Dr. Eddington. How will bottleneck courses be determined? Are these courses determined by the administration or by professors?
Yeah, so bottleneck courses, in terms of definitions, right? Those are courses that serve as a gateway into upper-division courses and that also really serve in many ways to filter students out, right? Based on lack of success in courses, et cetera. I think maybe the question is really asking, what courses in that category will be identified for face-to-face instruction? And that is a program-level decision, right? So our academic deans and our chairs, directors and faculty are the ones that actually are deciding which specific courses they will be able to offer face-to-face versus online. And the answer to that question in terms of which courses will be made available when the system is updated.
Okay, thank you very much. One last question before we wrap up the town hall. Will the band still be able to practice, meet and play during football games? And Courtney, I guess that might be tossed right to you.
Well, I think that's probably been one of the toughest questions, Keith. So I'd like to call in some backup and my good fraternity brother, brother Dr. Hudson on this one. But I have had some very, very good conversations with Dr. Chipman over the past week. You know, we are excited, you know, about the potential of getting our March 100 members back. We're still working to figure that out and how that's going to look. But Dr. Hudson, I will tee it up for you.
Well, Dr. Chipman and his staff is working very hard, along with Dean Matthews. I'm actually meeting with Dr. Chipman tomorrow to talk about some different items. But he's working as well with Ms. Tatum to ensure that our students who may participate in the band, if everything goes as planned, bringing them back, that we make sure that it's a safe and healthy environment for those students and we are able to adhere to the social distancing guidelines. The safety of our students are first and foremost. And so we love the band just as everyone else, but we want to make sure that there's a safe and healthy environment for them to participate this fall.
Okay, thank you, A.D. Gosey and Dr. Hudson. Let me remind you once again that if we didn't get to answer your question, please send them to townhall@famu.edu and you will get an answer. Also remember, the recording of this event will be posted to famu.edu/virtualtownhall for review at your leisure. And here's some of the remarks that may have covered some of your concern. It's now time for closing remarks from Dr. Robinson.
Well, thank you, Keith, and all of the members of the team who responded to questions this afternoon. I really hope that this town hall meeting has provided participants with very valuable information as we prepare for reopening the university. I just want to emphasize that you're buying in participation in this reopening plan. And those are critical to the success overall. I want to thank our panelists for their perspectives this afternoon, but also for the hard work that they do behind the scene each and every day for all of the stakeholders at Florida A&amp;M University. And once again, I want to particularly thank Ms. Rika Calhoun and Task Force Operation Continuity for doing the work of putting this plan together. Finally, I wanted to assure all of you that we are indeed Rattlers and that our highest concern is the health and safety of the entire FAMU community. We will work to protect the family. I'm extremely proud of how we've worked together to this point and I assure you that we will continue to do so as we get through this pandemic together. I want to advise you all to continue to be safe and vigilant and protecting yourselves and your families. Thank you and have a wonderful afternoon.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson and all of the panelists participating in this president's virtual town hall. Your respective leadership has propelled the university into the national spotlight on how we have responded to this situation and also to get the approval from the FAMU Board of Trustees and the Florida Board of Governors on reopening. As Dr. Robinson has said, during this town hall, your buy-in is the key to success for our return to campus. Let me thank FAMU Information Technology, Michael Simmons, Ron Henry, Wayne Dunwoodie, Gregory Spates and Theo Greer for all of their technical support and expertise. And the Office of Communications, our office, for all of their hard work and due diligence during this crisis as well. Finally, this town hall will be posted again at famu.edu/virtualtownhall for you to review later. Thank you again for participation. Please stay safe. Good afternoon and we will approach, we will approach our reopening the right way with the Rattler Charters, Dr. Robinson.
All right, after all these athletic and band questions, I felt like we were on the field of Bragg Stadium. The dark clouds gather on the horizon, when thunder and lightning fill the sky, when feathers but a glint in the apple fall in Rattler and hopes of lost friends. When the sound of the chest grows weary from those hard-charging linebackers and the muscles to the ass grow tired from those hard-charging running backs. You must always remember that the Rattlers will strike and strike and strike again. Let's go, Rattlers.
Let's go, Rattlers. Good night.